Good afternoon, everyone. We'll call this School Board Work Session to order at 4:01 PM. We are here in the ASD Education Center. Present in the boardroom are board members Lessons, Donley Jacobs, Wilson Hon-Holloman. Online, we'll announce other members as they arrive. We have two topics on our agenda for tonight. We'll hand it off to Dr. Bryant for our first item of discussion, which is B1 Right Sizing.
Thank you, Mr. President. So to recap for the general public, at the conclusion of last year's right sizing initiative, the district was asked by the board to recommend at least one more school for right sizing. So this week, we released our right sizing proposal to the public and will now begin receiving community input before a board decision is made on November 18th. To recap, some of the high-level data points for how we got here. ASD has lost over 7,000 students, and this proposal identifies two schools, Lake Otis and Fire Lake Elementary School, which happened to each be at around 50% capacity. And I do recognize that school consolidations are deeply emotional for everyone involved, and we do not take this step lightly. But as we brace for another $70 million structural deficit, there's no way to fully shield our classrooms from experiencing a negative impact. And our low-capacity schools are especially vulnerable for losing teachers, for having to share services with other buildings, and consolidating programs. So consolidating our low-capacity buildings is one of the few levers that we actually have to consolidate our resources and strengthen our neighborhood schools. But this proposal is also more than about consolidations. This proposal also includes a plan to add commercial childcare services in vacant classrooms throughout the district, as well as some boundary changes to provide relief in some of our secondary schools. So with that said, I'll hand it off to our team to walk us through the proposal and answer board questions.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant. So I wanted to go through real quick the right sizing areas of focus. We have spoken publicly now a couple times about leasing available space to childcare operators. It is certainly a need within the community. It's a need within the employees with the municipality, our employees. There's a childcare desert in nearly every area of Anchorage. So we're actively looking at schools and trying to identify places where we could have a group of rooms with their own entrance, because you don't want it mixed with the school all day long. And we're pretty close, probably another week, we will have those locked in, and we'll be able to brief that in the next board meeting. We worked with Fairview for quite a while and have been working with KCI, Kids Core International. And we're currently doing a design for some slight modifications, and the rest of it was just a perfect setup, one being in an area with high economic need, where a lot of people would qualify fairly close to the actual location. But as all the board members know, we have a lot of people in the district, and it's really, especially the hourly wage earners that already qualify for state childcare assistance, already would qualify if there were enough Head Start programs in the city. So I think this is a big positive win, and I think it's time to transition away from just looking at a focus on school closures. We started moving towards right sizing last year and looking at available spaces for leases and other things, and now we're just making that next generational move toward not just looking at ASD needs, but how do we help this community that has supported us on bond after bond after bond over the many decades that we've existed. The second piece is the boundary adjustments, where we're really going to focus this year. And Sven will brief those, on trying to take some pressure off of ROMIG. And he'll go through that and talk through the logic and how it makes sense as a natural boundary adjustment in almost every way. We didn't mention the other boundary adjustments, but obviously, if the board votes to close one of the two schools, then there would be boundary adjustments for those as well, and we would follow that up in the springtime. For school consolidations, we looked at, there really hasn't been a lot changed in terms of how would you develop a rubric. It really, we've got quite a few low-capacity schools, which you'll see in this brief, and almost every one of them was a low-capacity school last year as well. And as we get to each of those schools individually, we'll talk in more details. The board did direct, on top of coming back and providing additional school closures, that we prioritize Rikishula and Highland Tech. With only two school closures, it's much like last year, there's competing needs and few resources, but we are recommending Lake Otis for Rikishula. They require 28 classrooms. It has 29 classrooms. Square footage, it's actually pretty close to what Abbott Loop has. Where it differs is those funky spaces in the ends of the hallways that really weren't designed to be classrooms. ANCCS used them, for the most part, for storage. They have put curtains over some places and turned them into classrooms, and I certainly encourage you to go visit that school. I think they've done a great job of taking what they had and turned it into something that was best for children. But looking long-term, and again, the board did direct that it's prioritized, we're looking for a more permanent home for them. At Fire Lake, the only good repurpose that we could see in that general area was Eagle Academy. And, you know, we did think about, do you even open it up for nothing but childcare? But it would be so large for something like that, that it just didn't really seem very practical. So as we look at school building capacity, we've briefed this a couple times. I just wanted to make sure that when people see the capacity percentages on a follow-on slide, that they understand what that actually represents. So the state of Alaska, for decades, has said, if you're an elementary student, you get 114 square feet. And that probably works if everybody is gym-er-led, if everybody is just like each other and doesn't need additional assistance or any other program. Apparently, that worked 30 years ago. It has not been updated since then. If you look at ASD, what Capital Plans has been doing over the years is modifying it by looking at PTR within the classrooms, and you can see all of these other pieces. And they tried to make it closer to what the schools' needs really are. But when we look at, and I put some of the numbers on a follow-on slide, and I'll talk about it, when you look at the diverse needs of many of our schools and our students, you'll see that multiple life skills classrooms require additional resource classrooms. And each of those classrooms is a very small number of people, SBBS programs, SLC programs, all of those come with additional MSDRs if it's SBBS, the multisensory deprivation rooms, and other spaces that are never going to fit into 114 square feet per child per school. And they're never going to fit into 165 feet per child at a secondary school. And so I did recognize that last year, halfway through, as I started, as we started getting all the classroom level detail down, that we had to go a little bit further. And this year, we've really tried to look at, we narrowed down to 65% and below for capacity, and then we started going on those schools first, room by room, and whether it should be used for that purpose, or is there a better use for it. And there are schools with very low capacity that would have, and I'm just giving an example so you understand the process we went through. If you had art and health, and they each have two weeks, and then they're gone for two weeks, and then the other teacher steps in and does their piece, schools with lots of capacity, they'll give an art teacher their own room and a health teacher their own room. Some schools would give a teacher two rooms, if it had a sliding divider, one room for the classroom and other storage, and they didn't do it out of anything other than because they could. The space was there, and if there is a vacuum, it will be filled, and that's kind of what happened. And as we started going through it, we realized not just that we found classrooms that we could find a better use for for repurposing, but that's really where the lights just started slamming and coming on, knowing that this room is, there's three SBBS kids in this room, but they have 1,000 square feet, but they still need another room for when there's a challenge. And so we will be developing, over the next several months, a new way of looking at capacity. And when Larry Morris gets up here, he's been on the committee at the state level. He knows how the appearance of overcapacity impacts us with winning and scoring on major maintenance grants, and he can answer it better than me. He's explained it to me 10 times, but he's at a PhD level on this, and I'm like, probably not. But I do understand that the math doesn't work when the state thinks that we have all this capacity. And you'll see, as you see our sped numbers and the percentage of sped growing and growing and growing, and intensive needs, that really did change the dynamic for how we should have been looking at capacity in schools. And frankly, that is one of the primary reasons it's going to take us months to do this, that we really didn't want to put a bunch of schools on the list, only to later decide that we closed the wrong school because of a special program or some other need. So the other thing that we are looking at, when we say repurposing rooms, we still have a number of leases within the district, not counting the Ed Center. You've still got almost $2.5 million in leases. Last year, when we recommended Highland Academy for Nunaka Valley, you know, we really were ambivalent. Stream's a great school. They're, for the first time since they formed, they're feeding hot lunches at 200 kids per day. It was a great school for Stream. The business model, though, was ACT lease was running out at the end of June, and if we didn't put them in a location, and Nunaka at that point was the only one really available, that we were going to have to do renovations and sign a lease to move the ACT program either way. So ACT is in a multi-year lease right now. It's going to take some time, but at some point, you know, we're certainly going to keep looking at everything with a lease and try to see if there's space in our buildings. And if we can get the state to change the way they calculate it, and it's not just the enrollment or the ADM by the Oasis count for that school code, but includes all of the other components of the district that might very well be in there, to include things like Volunteers of America, which serves an all-day, full-time need for several of our schools, but we are going to keep looking at everything on this lease line as well. So here's our enrollment decline just since, really, September 30 of 2015. We have closed some schools. I did add that we closed in FY21, Avail and Crossroads. But then I did the math on a couple things to show that, even though we have 7,000 less students, we have 124 more pre-K. And when you look at the amazing folks down the hall that have been evaluating and testing young children, there's already been 28 or 29, and that number could be higher, this is a couple days old, that are going to need sped pre-K in January. So a lot of these smaller classes, they're only continuing to grow. You look at the 182% growth in intensive needs, it went from a little over 550 to over 1,000 in that timeframe. And intensive needs naturally is going to mean they're not in a classroom with 30 other kids. So just for talking points for the board, as you're talking to legislators, and certainly on some sides, as you know, they just look at the capacity that goes by the square footage, and I think it's important for all of us to be able to maybe articulate better the direction Anchorage has been heading for over a decade. So this is the initial list of schools with a capacity of less than 65%. And we really did start going through these, and it's certainly developed even more as we started doing a classroom-by-classroom level analysis. And we did put notes next to it, and yes, we did select Fire Lake for the second time in a row, and I understand, it is personal to every one of those families. It is personal to every one of the staff and the students at that school, but it really did, just like last year, make the most sense. And, you know, we just threw a lot of money into Homestead for SBBS classrooms. It also has some of the funkier, corner-shaped, weird angled rooms within the school, and it works for SBBS because they needed more space for such a small number of students, and they've really been able to make that work in that school. But when you look at the programs and all the other things they needed, like MSDR and other sensory stuff, the capacity's really pretty full. There's three or four classrooms that you could potentially repurpose, but they're in weird places within the building. And you can read the rest of these on your own. I don't think you need me to read. But we really did look at these schools very closely. There are schools, and we acknowledge that there are schools that have classrooms available that we are looking at, and it could be childcare, it could be other programs within the district that need space. It could be a lot of things, and we just don't know right now. We haven't locked that in. But in the next two weeks, that will become much more clear. And quite honestly, we won't have all the answers next week at all the places where there's available space, and we will continue this process. It'll just start being a normal routine, that we evaluate spaces in buildings, and do we have a need that could fit there to get out of a lease? And I think that's a positive direction to go, and a better use of our facilities. So this is the Fire Lake Elementary School consolidation. There's been a lot of emails to the board today. There'll be more. There will be testimony, as it was last year. We are planning on less than five students going to Chugak Elementary, 41 being rezoned for Birchwood, and 143 being rezoned for Eagle River Elementary. You know, Eagle River is not unique, but I did make a slide to kind of give everyone an example of what happens within our district. Parent choice is real and strong, and you will see in almost every school, upwards of a dozen-plus different zones that parents bring their kids to a different school. And it could be that's where they work, or they work nearby, or they know the principal, they know the teachers. There's a lot of reasons why someone would rezone, but if you look at the Eagle River area, these are the numbers that we're looking at, and it would be 41 rezoned for Birchwood. It would be, and you can see the capacity on the bottom, if you look at the new capacity number. You know, obviously, some of these folks will not go to the school that they've been rezoned for. They will choose a different school. And it's the same for Chugak Elementary and naturally Eagle River. But when I started pulling the numbers of the boundary zone exempt that got approved this year, and I think most of the board members know, last year, we had this huge chart, and it showed every school in the district and what zone those students came from. We have finished that chart, it's being printed, and y'all will have copies of that in two weeks. Or if you come by when they come in, we can send an email out, or we can send you the digits for it, but it's really hard to read if it's not like a two-foot by three-foot-long piece of paper. But you can see that in every instance of these four schools in Eagle River, that certainly a large percentage of the students in that school are from within that boundary. And there's lots of good reasons. One of them, every single school is a great school, but parents choose to go somewhere else. And these other numbers you see, like on Fire Lake, one of them goes to Aurora on base. I don't know if it's an employee, but it's someone who can get on base. It could be a military person, but as you look through this, you'll see that there's not a single zone where everybody goes to the school they're supposed to go to. And this includes the other Eagle River schools, but trying to fit all of them on one chart became problematic. So I just wanted to paint that picture for the schools that we're talking about tonight, in that there's a lot of parent choice happening. And you can see, I can't see it on my chart because it's covered up with the Chugak students, 23 of them already go to Birchwood, and they're in the Chugak Elementary. You can see that for all of them. So parents will always be concerned when a school closes or potentially closes, but we've got a lot of great schools in Eagle River, and as I showed on this chart, we still have capacity, even after Fire Lake is closed. If, I should say if. And that'll be, and we'll all find out in November, but we'll talk to the communities again. I think all of you remember last year, you know, we had the community conversations meetings, and we got a lot of information about schools, about things that changed between last year, or what the information we had available. And I hope everyone appreciates that we have not been going to principals for seven weeks and every day saying, what do you think about your school closing, and what are the problems? We've been trying to do an analysis from a 3,000-foot level, because you don't want principals consumed, you want them consumed with starting school and focusing on students and student outcomes, not every school in the district wondering how many more charts they can fill out for us. It's just probably the most traumatic thing you could do to a district to even think that shit happened in the first week of school. So we will learn some things we don't know, and we're well aware of that, and that's why we welcome the community conversations. And Lake Otis, you can see that we've really got four schools that the students would be designated toward, well, five counting Airport Heights. And then here's the slide that shows the numbers, really a very small number at College Gate and Airport Heights, with the vast majority of them really split between Cassoon and Tudor Elementary, with a few others. And again, just like in Eagle River, if the board closes the school, we have not maxed out the schools in this area. There will be growth sometime in Anchorage's future. It will eventually happen, we're not going to get to zero, and we still have space to be able to make that happen.
Now shifting to the boundary changes around ROMIG Middle School. ROMIG Middle School, once we moved sixth grade in, has become very, very full, has four relocatables, currently has 1,117 students at ROMIG. And we started looking at all of the boundaries around ROMIG, and we found a couple that kind of make sense now, because there's been some changes, or we are kind of finding things that probably were overlooked. The first one is there's a neighborhood just west of the highway, south of Tudor, that normally, they're Rogers Park students, that those kids go to ROMIG and West. Their neighborhood Rogers Park students. All the other neighborhood Rogers Park students go to Wendler and then East High School. So this is a move of a small number of students. For ROMIG, it's only 22 students moving to Wendler. For West, it would be 48 students moving to Betty Davis D. San Grace High School. Then the second boundary change would be over in the Taku Elementary Zone. Currently, Taku goes to two different schools. The southern part of Taku goes to Hanchu and Service, the northern part of Taku goes to ROMIG and West. Now that 76th runs under the highway, in the throughway to the other side of the highway, the actual bus timing for those northern group of students that would go to ROMIG now would actually be 10 minutes less getting over to Hanchu. So our proposal is that all of Taku Elementary School students would then go to Hanchu and Service instead of being split in half. With the Hanchu move, that 73 students currently go to ROMIG that would go to Hanchu, and that is 72 students that currently go to West that would be going to Service. Now, one of the things that we do when we have these kind of boundaries is we do look at, and people will say, well, are my kids grandfathered in? With what we've done in the past and what we would consider now to be, what we'll be doing is with the middle school students, we would say that they would go to the new middle school. For the high school students that already have maybe even a letter, or an A or something on their jackets, they can get an automatic lottery zone exemption. To stay at West, we're still working on the ability to be able to bus those kids for the three years. We haven't gotten that figured out yet, because it is a lot larger part of the city than we had in the recent past when we've changed boundaries. So that is the boundaries, and on these charts, this middle school chart, it shows that ROMIG with these would go down to 959 students next year. So moving about 95 kids over to the other two schools, which would be some nice relief for that school. And then for the high school, West would be looking at losing about 70, with the change in enrollments and stuff, they'd be about 70 students less than they are now.
So the next steps for us, obviously, are to continue analysis, to look for anything we don't know yet, or look for any changes that might impact the recommendation, and brief the board. And we have a lot of details to work out for programs and other things in schools across the district. And in the next two weeks, there'll be another brief, and we'll have much more updated information. And then that will be followed by a meeting with the Joint Advisory Committee at the Ed Center. We did that last year, and honestly, that was one of the best meetings I've attended. Tony set that up. We all went and talked to a roomful of people that really gave us great feedback that we could incorporate this year as to how we look at schools. We'll follow that with, on October 28th, there'll be two meetings, one at Wendler, one in Hanchu, and those will be talking about the boundary adjustments to the families that are impacted by those potential boundary changes. And then we will have the community conversation meetings set up, much like what all the board members saw last year. The first one at East. The first one at East on the twenty-ninth, then Chugak, we we are not having one on Halloween. But we will have one that next morning or that afternoon on November first at the Ed Center. And then after that, we'll collect all the information we can from the surveys that we can put out at those meetings. And then the first board meeting in November would be non-action for the board memo, so you know, the more we can discuss this, the more the district administration kind of knows where the board is leaning as we develop this and and fluff it all out into something more refined, so certainly look forward to those conversations at future work sessions and at the the other meetings that we attend. And if you have any other questions, we we do have information. I don't know if we have all of it, anything you send an email, we can get compiled and try to make sure that we're bouncing it, not just back to the board members, but adding it to the FAQ page. Because if you're asking, there's probably someone else who's curious as well.
Thank you, Dr. Bryant, Mr. Anderson, Mr. Gustafson, I will go to board member lessons.
Thank you, I have two clarifying questions. The first one is about the use of the term capacity. You you talked about the difference between ASD and ASD, and I just wanted to clarify. So for example, on Slide six with the chart of the capacities, those are ASD's calculations or DEED's calculations?
Whenever I put, those are, those are the ASD calculations, but they're not the by-room diagram. When I put, for for some of them, I put exactly how many classrooms we have confirmed are available for repurposing. And on some of them, I put several or something like that, and we're just finalizing those details, so ultimately, by middle of November, we need to be in a space where we're down to, it's these classrooms, it's one thirteen through one eighteen or whatever. And we just have a little bit more work to do because we first, before we can finalize, we have to look at any special ed program moves and everything else because we we don't want to double count or negative count any spaces that are available. So we just need another week or so. And when we come back, we'll know by school where we say this is a school that we think has another purpose for some of its space. We'll know exactly how many classrooms we're looking at.
Thank you, and if I may follow up, the second clarifying question was about the movement of high school students, and I just, Mr. Gustafson, I wanted to follow up just to clarify. It sounded like you suggested that if a student sort of was, you know, had had a varsity letter, that would indicate their, the likelihood that they could stay at West, I mean, are we talking about all students or just some students?
No, if we want to give any of the students that are in this zone that's going to be changing, if they want to stay at West, they would be automatically be able to stay at West, we're still working on the transportation. And I misspoke a little bit earlier about middle school. My staff texted me right away.
Okay.
That we have offered that they could have automatic zone exemptions, but that would not have busing from middle school, and that's what we've done in the past.
But all high school students who are currently enrolled at West would have the technical option to maintain their enrollment.
Yes.
If their family so choose, so choose.
And we will know, we will know the bus figure out, we'll have that figured out by the next work session. So we'll brief that for sure by then.
Thank you.
Member Wilson.
Just for clarification, the consolidation numbers are these, these are the projected future numbers within each of those schools, I'm looking at page eleven, for example. Lake Otis Elementary School consolidation starts in two thousand twenty-five and moves.
So if you look at the adjusted enrollment under each one, so like at College Gate, the adjusted enrollment for two thousand twenty-six is three fifty-one. That would be what we're projecting for next year, is that what you're asking?
No, I was looking forward to like two thousand thirty-three, look at the end, are we looking at projected enrollment decreasing?
Yes.
You know, currently, because of the birth rate decline, and it has not gone back up again. But but it's a projection. And and this this particular projection is over a very long period of time where a lot of things could happen. I think there is a lot of optimism on an LNG pipeline and and other mineral developments that may increase Anchorage's population. It's really based off how many kids were born yesterday or last year. But so much could change to move this around, and that's why Sven and I had some some maybe loud conversations about making sure as we look at capacity at schools and we get down to classroom level, that we need to look at space available if and when they grow. Or if and when additional funding comes to the district, and now we get closer to smaller class sizes. So when we look at a school that has four classrooms or six classrooms or whatever it might be, and we look at making it repurposed for another use, we'll be looking at it as, do we do it for short-term? Things like programs that could easily move around the district, and it's just office space. If we look at something like a childcare lease, then we need to look at all those schools around it, so if there is growth, there's room to be able to fit growth into those other schools if you've just taken that capacity away. And and I think we're pretty in sync for making sure that that we look not just at the school when we look at repurpose in a number of classrooms, but look at the area surrounding the school to make sure that there's room for growth. And so there will be some schools that we intentionally leave classrooms not repurposed because we repurpose another school near them, knowing that if there's growth in that area, it's got to expand somewhere. So I don't think we would ever come up with a plan to use every single classroom, especially knowing we've been in a budget-constrained environment for so long. At some point, I think all of us are hopeful that 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 situation will turn around, and when it does, a lower PTR means more classrooms because it means more teachers. And so we have, do have to have that growth, and it's more like playing a harmonica when you're looking at or an accordion. Obviously, I wasn't a music major. When you're looking at it, it's really looking at those three or four schools around the one school that you just maxed out, knowing that you intentionally left room for those students that are coming, or those new teachers that are coming.
Okay, I'm going to jump in with two quick questions myself. The first, we've we've talked about our alternate method of calculating capacity. Have we thought about including that information on our CIP, for example? Or when we're discussing capacity figures, just starting to normalize that figure as one that's more accurate and more informed?
Well, it won't be in this year's because it's coming to the board in just a few weeks, and we won't even have this plan done. But in future CIPs, I suspect, like what we showed you on this slide, just like the way Larry, Anidi, and Tom, last year, we changed the CIP where we didn't just show year one, this is on the bond. After that, we showed what is year one that's going to be grant-funded or other monies that we use and all the other construction that's not associated with a bond. We will find a format where we can show you know, multiple different views of how to look at something. Because we're not going to get DEED approval quickly, we're probably the only district though we are the only district I'm aware of that's that's looking at this, but you know, you look at like Matsu, and I pulled DEED's reports for Matsu and Fairbanks because they're our next closest in terms of size. And all of us, even though Matsu is is about forty percent our size and Fairbanks is thirty percent our size. When you get past Fairbanks, most of the school districts don't have a significant population of special needs students. The three of us do, though. Now, we are more than double in almost every category, and three times Matsu in some categories, even though they're about forty percent our size. But we are pretty close when you look at, when I did the percentages of types of students in the DEED report or types of needs of the students in the DEED report. We all share a similar requirement. And and I think that once we get ours done and we can get it into a more briefable format, we can start working with those other districts and try to build a coalition because we're just never going to be like a four-room bush schoolhouse because our needs, our requirements are so much more diverse.
I I think this slide here explaining the differences and how and why we can calculate a better figure is just good, along with the accompanying data, it would just be good information for the public and the legislature to have and consider as they evaluate our district. Thank you. The other question was regarding capacity figures for elementary schools that were listed on the the lowest percentage capacity wise. I think AK Choice was noted as residing in Ocean View and
Alpen Glow.
Alpen Glow. When did those, when did AK Choice move into those two?
Last year.
So last summer?
We're in the second, we're in the second year.
Understood, okay, thank you. Member Bellamy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I I really want to focus on the questions regarding what we, how we're going to transition kids, we've learned a lot from Abbott Loop, that transition. But I also want to know, at some point, if not today, what, once, if we, if the board chooses to move Fire Lake and Lake Otis, or at least consolidate those schools into other schools, what are we looking at in terms of PTR? And really focus on how we expect the consolidation to to really improve and and strengthen instruction. So I know we've talked about it a little bit, but I just, I really need to know specific, just, you know, specifically, what is that going to look like? And I think families want to know it, too.
We can build that into one of our next briefs.
That would be great.
Session.
That'd be great.
For sure.
You know, the one difficult thing on PTR, and I know everyone on the board understands, PTR is directly tied to the amount of revenue we receive. It's not the number of classrooms.
I absolutely agree.
And so, you know, the theory behind closing and consolidating schools and increasing services is dependent upon its steady funding. When the funding equation is so off the mark, it it's difficult to promise something when we may not know until June how much money we're going to have.
Yes, and I absolutely understand that, but I still think we need to give some thought to what those class sizes are going to look like. Given our best.
You know, Member Bellamy, one of the things I would say, and we'll have it more detailed, is the class sizes may not be any different at the the new schools. But instead of having one level of kindergarten, one level, you have have colleagues that work together, you have ability to do win groups and have more people for that. And the specialists are and we can utilize specialist FTE in a more efficient manner and those types of things. And we can, we can try to do our best on that, but then that funding piece is always going to be on on top of us.
You know, if you swing by Baxter, you'll see it like on full open display. They they have more of the other needs that kids that kids really need.
Before I move on, I just want to, for our record, the Member Bellamy joined us at four oh three, and Member Higgins joined us online at four eleven P M. We'll go to Member Donnelly.
This slide that shows the state formula for occupancy versus the district formula really highlights how primitive the state formula and how a step it is with reality. I'm wondering, who's our point contact with the the task force, the legislative task force? Because I would hope that we would be, that's the kind of slide we ought to be submitting as evidence for that task force to consider.
Member Donnelly, I don't know that there's a specific point of contact that I've been in touch with, but I do know that the task force will be visiting ASD campuses in November in Anchorage, and so this is timely, and I'm sure we'll be bringing it up. Thank you for your question, any follow-up?
Just, I'd like to, I have some suggestions on others, there's, we've had some really good graphics like this that I think really tell a story. And I just hope that we're transmitting those as an organization to the task force, is all I'm hoping for.
Thank you, Member Donnelly, we'll go to Member Lessons.
Thank you, this is maybe more of a follow-up to Member Bellamy's question about PTR, but I'm, and less of a question for for you folks, but we've talked about the projected deficit, it's seventy-five million dollars, and then we need another twenty-six million to lower class sizes to the target class size that the legislature would like to see. That's a pretty substantial figure for for us to produce a balanced budget, so you know, I I understand that the intent of the right sizing and the consolidation is to improve the level of service that our students are going to receive. But in my mind, I'm really calculating and expecting to see like double-digit PTR increases as part of our our budget conversations, maybe that's wrong, but we've talked, I mean, I I don't know how many, I don't know what a PTR, I mean, I I don't know what sort of a PTR increase we should realistically be expecting to balance a seventy-five million dollar deficit. I know that in FY twenty-three, it was, we used fifty-something million dollars of federal one-time funds to prevent a PTR plus ten. That's my context, that's my baseline.
Thank you, Member Lessons, we'll go to Member Bellamy.
No, I'm done, I'm sorry, I thought I turned it off.
Are there other questions from the board before we move on? Hearing and seeing on Dr. Bryant and team, thank you very much for the the data. And we'll look forward to the community conversations. Our second item for discussion is B two bond CIP, Dr. Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. President, we'll go ahead and let our team get settled, and then Mr. Anderson and team will share more about the bond and CIP.
Okay, second brief, we are going to focus on bond today, we we finished the CIP brief, and it's because we wanted to make sure that we could provide the most information. It it's a pretty long brief, it's a standalone. So we'll we'll focus on the bond today, I have Larry Morris with me, who knows more about how DEED looks at facilities, talks about facilities, gives grants than anyone in the district. Behind me, we have Edie Knapp, who runs every construction project in the district, has oversight for them, and can answer really any any details that that may come up as required. So before we get into the bond, I wanted to discuss events with Ursa Major because it may impact the bond. We have not put additional money for Ursa Major on the bond at this time. We don't even need the board to give us a decision tonight. But a head nod of general agreement would be would be nice. So this is, this is what happened, this building was built a long time ago. It has PCBs sprayed on the outside of the building, the inside of the building, and on the roof. And these are in solid form, so they're not dangerous to anybody unless you were to eat it, I guess. They're not dangerous, but in Alaska, PCBs in any form can't be buried. There's a lot of states where PCBs in liquid form can't. But what this means is, normally, when we demo a building, we take all the rubble over to the landfill and it gets buried. But in this case, because it's contaminated with PCBs, the rubble would have to be shipped by barge down to the Lower Forty-Eight, probably Oregon, and then railed across and buried in a landfill down there. Well, naturally, that adds a lot more expense to the cost of demo that we had initially planned when we submitted the grant. Larry's got a contract going through to get the other three schools on base looked at, just so we know for future decision-making if if they were built in a similar manner. So because we didn't know about the PCBs when we did the first grant, it wasn't in it, and now we can't get the grant to cover the additional five-point-four. But recall, it was an eighty percent match, so the federal government has paid eighty percent of the building, and we're paying twenty percent. But J-Bear and the DOD grant don't plan on covering it. So we actually have two and maybe three options. One is to bond for the additional five-point-four, or, and we will start looking through all of the other One is to bond for the additional 5.4 or, and we will start looking through all of the other areas where maybe we can, we can reduce that number of 5.4 by reprioritizing other dollars that we already have. And, and really the other one is close Ursa Major and just write it off. And so these are the pros and cons for closing Ursa Major versus a rebuild. The, the one thing we'll probably never see in the state of Alaska as a pro to rebuild it is 80% grant to cover building a school. If we were to continue rebuilding Ursa Major, we would have a brand new school that would last for decades before it needed anything. And it would give us more flexibility to look at other schools on base if declining population still continues and declining childbirth and, and other things. But as long as the other ones aren't condemned because they were damaged during the earthquake or something else, if we were to close another school in the future, it could probably just be given back to the base and they could use it alongside for other purposes, just like they're using all the other buildings on base that were built in that timeframe. So there's definitely some pros. The con, we might need to add it to the bond and, and we'll know in a couple of weeks when we come back. Or that number might be significantly smaller because we found other solution sets that, that may lower that cost. So to close it, for those who, who recall, we put some money down initially. And we got it from all the major maintenance grant money that, or the bond debt reimbursement money that we got a few years ago. We put back about 12 million, 2 million for design and, and demo, and then there's about 10 million for construction. That 10 million is pretty fungible. It could be used for a number of things. It could be used for anything from cutting deficit through using it for other projects. The con though of doing this is now we're going to eat the entire cost at some point of demoing this building anyway. J-Bear is not going to take it back. The city's not going to take it. No one's going to sign up for now an eight and a half million dollar cost because there's no DOD grant reimbursement for a portion of that. So, you know, we actually have gone round and round on this until we finally looked at it purely from a dollar decision and a strategy decision. And it really is, do we want a building on base that we don't need to worry about for 50 years or at least 30? Before it needs a new renovation? Do we want to sign a future administration and board up for really in another year or so, it's going to be a $10 million cost to demo this and ship it to the Lower 48. And as environmental rules change and other states go on the anti, you know, you can't bury stuff in our backyard. We don't know how much that cost would go, but at some point it's going to come back and it's going to come back on us. And so it sounds really good to say, wow, I could get $10 million tomorrow. Put that towards the deficit and that's really going to help us in January. Yes, but someday someone is going to pick up an even much larger cost. And it's all going to be on ASD and, and I think it's going to be really difficult to pass a bond in this community for 10 or 12 million dollars for demo when they don't get anything out of it. So that's my thoughts on it. I certainly am open to discussion because I think I've been very honest that it is appetizing to look at that $10 million and pull it back and use it now. But that 10 million now is going to create a problem for the district in the future. And, and it's going to be big. So that's the way I see it.
Mr. Anderson, I'll, I'll jump in and ask if we are confident that the 80% federal match is still something that we can expect.
It's completely locked in. If we get the demo, it's already been approved. It hasn't been awarded because the demo hasn't occurred. And it's multi-year money that was actually approved. I think when Tom and I went back three years ago, it had been approved, I don't know, a long time, many years prior. And, and what DOD found out was there's communities all across the US that they just wouldn't bond for a military school. Or, you know, the look, we all know that the military doesn't pay local taxes unless they buy a house off base. So in some communities, it was, it just wasn't acceptable to them to bond. So there's been nothing in DOD world on this particular grant that it's been targeted. It doesn't have any of the the wrong words in it. It doesn't, it's just DOD schools.
Thank you, Member Donnelly.
What's the reason that the product, the waste needs to be exported from the state?
Well, you can't set it on the ground.
Well, why?
There's nowhere to put it. There's nowhere that you can contain it.
So it's not like there's a statute against it. It's just that there's no facility that can handle it safely?
Not a building of 50,000 square feet. I, I can't imagine.
Okay. So is that the reason? It's not that there's some statute or regulation that prohibits it.
I just don't think such a building of, so a few years back, the, they, well, it doesn't matter who it was. Took down a lot of transformers. They ended up, all of the old transformers were filled with PCBs because it doesn't contract and expand with heat and cold. And after they took them all down and replaced them, they realized that they had a multimillion dollar problem on their hands. And it, it took a significant amount of effort to solve that, but there's just, just, I mean, think about snow dumps in Anchorage. When we had Snowmageddon and then Snowpocalypse or the other way around, we didn't even have room to put the snow. Much less an area that's going to hold, I, I don't know how many tons, a 50,000 square foot building is in rubble, but someone would have to go buy land to put it on. And the dump isn't going to let it sit on top because now they can't use the dump.
I'm, I'm not trying to debate with you, Jim. I just wanted to know why it was so difficult. If there's no facility that can safely handle it, that's a good answer.
Yeah, there's nothing designed. I mean, what you said is true, I think. I think there's no law against setting it on concrete and letting it sit there for 50 years. I just don't. In, in Fairbanks, when they demoed some, they sent it down to the Lower 48. J-Bear in the past has shipped it to the Lower 48. I don't, I don't know of any the totem light. I don't know. We gave that back.
And I'm not trying to force you to speculate on how to dispose of it. I'm just trying to identify what the cause of the problem is.
Yeah. It really is a state law that did it. It doesn't discriminate between solid PCBs and liquid PCBs. It just says PCBs.
So there is a state statute that says that. Is it, is it a statute or a regulation?
It's a statute, right? It's a regulation.
Okay.
Not a statute.
And that's a significant point because regulations can be modified by.
But easier.
Yeah. Thank you.
There are other pieces of feedback for the administration regarding Ursa Major. Okay, seeing on Mr. Anderson.
Okay. And I'll hand this off to Larry.
Oh, you've seen this before. You've got a lot of busy things, you know, in the board, but a couple of things I wanted to bring for educational facilities. Our hierarchy is protect the people, protect the facility, enhance educational delivery and achieve operating cost savings. And looking at this, some of them, projects besides protecting people, safety and security, will also take into account other things in there for operating cost savings, some major renovations where we actually hit all of them. But this is how we work through developing a hierarchy of what projects are more important.
So real quick, I think everyone's tracking that we've had a moratorium for 10 years on state bond debt reimbursement. They did not pass legislation bringing it back. They just let the last moratorium, it timed out. So by law, by state law, on one January or one July 2025, state bond debt reimbursement has come back. And it covers either 40% or 50%, depending on the project. The vast majority of everything on the April bond, and it might be everything on the April bond, would, would be 50%. If you were to put something like the Ursa Major portion of it being demoed, that might be 40, but we'll, we'll clean that up in the next couple of weeks. But, but, so here's where we are. We had a 63, 64 million dollar bond last year. We've been trying to keep it around that because every time we went over, those were the bonds that failed. But now that we have 50% reimbursement, then a much bigger bond is certainly possible. It's what's the level of risk the board is comfortable with for the dollar amount? So this year's bond is probably going to hover around 73, 74 million dollars. It might go up a little bit depending on Ursa Major and we'll, we'll talk to you about that again next week. But do you really want to go with a double, 126 million and say, well, that's the same amount to the taxpayer as as it has been for the last decade, knowing that in the past decade, state bond debt reimbursement has been vetoed a number of times. And the, the current leader of our state who's, who's, you know, prioritizing where funding should go always has the opportunity to veto and has demonstrated that repeatedly over the last seven years. So you know, something that we, we do need to talk about is what, what is that level? Because at $75 million, you can legitimately go out to the taxpayer and say, yes, this is 10 million more than the last bond. It's the cheapest bond to the local community that you've seen since April of 2015 because of the state bond debt reimbursement. Assuming, again, the second piece to remember is the level of risk that you're taking is a short term risk. In the past, every time they vetoed bond debt reimbursement because money wasn't available, it ultimately turned around and we got it all back, which is how Inlet View got built. It got built because all of those vetoes from Governor Walker through Governor Dunleavy, finally there's a great year, there's money available because from the time this bond passes, technically the state owes it to us. It's just when are they going to pay it? All of you also know that we don't sell the whole bond the next morning. It gets sold over five to seven years. So the reality is the, the level of risk is not super high, but, but there is going to be shock at seeing a really large number overnight that they haven't seen in a decade or actually ever. So we know that we're going to have to have a really good comms plan, but MJ and his team are amazing, so that's going to happen. And, and letting them know that it's 50%, it's back. So this is not the 64 million dollar bond you passed last year. This is equivalent to a $35 million bond. And, and all of us, the board, the, the administration, we're going to have to make sure we get that word out, but so those are all the facts. And now as we go to what we've put initially on this, on this slide for year one, which would be the bond, it is higher than 63 million because I, I think we can sell the 50, 50% SBDR. We struggle with coming up with what's the number because we really thought 126 million is not going to, it's just, it, it, it's risky at, at best. And I can't, I just can't imagine you guys going to community council and, and showing something that's twice the size of what they've ever seen before and say, you know, it's just like last year though. It's much easier to pick a number that's a little bit smaller, at least the first year. Watch it go through after a very aggressive comms campaign and make sure the community understands you're only paying 50% of this. It's not like any other bond in the municipality is 50%.
Mr. Anderson, I'm going to interrupt for just a minute to first note that Member Lessons has a question and then we'll go, we'll go to that first. Member Lessons, the floor yours.
Okay, you can defer because I'm actually interested in the next slide.
Okay.
Or, or maybe we can just pivot to it.
Really quick, I'm going to ask for the board's consensus that we're going to extend today's work session until 5:30 because it's noticed on our board docs until it ends at 5. So any objection to continuing the conversation? Great, thank you. Okay.
So I guess maybe if I may just, I've note, I was, I pulled up the most recent CIP and there are some changes. And perhaps as you talk through it, if you could just talk about why some things are here on, on this recommendation and maybe other items that were on the CIP for 20, and I understand their dynamic as emergent needs present themselves. But if you could just help us understand the changes that have been made.
Well, a couple of things on here that is CLAT Elementary. We have a structural thing and we put it out and got designed. And therefore these are our actual structural recommendations for our 80s prototypical buildings. And so this one here, we added that in. Betty Davis East High School service. We actually have a, an electrical service. If you think of electrical services, Chugac Electric would actually own the service all the way until they get to your meter. And a disconnect. However, East, their demarcation point is right there at the road and we own a service loop at about 1,200, no, 7,200 volts that's going around and it's 60, 70 years old. And what we're going to be looking at doing is changing it in working with Chugac Electric is bringing the service to the building through our generator, which also needs to be upgraded. And it would be Chugiac owning it until it gets into the building at that demarcation point. And then we would feed it, subfeed it from a distribution panel to other distribution panels. We would no longer ha, own all of that extremely high voltage loop that's only about three feet below grade.
And when he says three feet below grade, there are service ports where when our electricians go in them, if they have standing water, they obviously can't work on it because it's below grade. This new one would bring everything up to where it was clean and dry. And, and then Chugac would pick it up and actually do all the maintenance on that high voltage system in, instead of our electricians. There's no risk to students. There's no risk to people, but no one's going to stick their hand underwater while working on 7,200 volts. So that system after 60 plus years really does need to be upgraded.
Couple other things on here. Tudor Elementary. They are one of the schools that still needs to have an SVU done. We also found out, speaking of emergent needs, we had talked a while back about the gang nail trusses, parallel cord wooden ones, the ones that the muni had put on a, a flyer. And we actually had all of our schools checked for these and we have three schools with them. And one of them, four of those classrooms at Tudor have those trusses in it. So, and it also needs a new roof. So one of our CPNC hierarchies is that if we need an SVU or other things, it's best to combine them all into one project. It makes it a whole lot easier to do and per item, it makes it a lot less expensive. So that's why that became, got upgraded to an emergent. One is its safety. It's protection of structure, both the trusses that in a very high snow year, we've seen a couple of them fail in the muni. And also protection of structure from, we have a leaky roof. So, and in doing this, we very probably will increase educational delivery for Tudor.
And I, I'd like to add that now that we're aware of where, and we have been for a year, where all the top hung trusses are, we do have a plan to always keep the snow level on those portions of those schools down to a low level. So there's no safety risk, but long But long term, um, if you already have to do the roof, why would you not, why would you not fix that? Um, Chinook, we're actually, um, gonna demo six classrooms, uh, for that same uh, construction challenge, uh, because honestly, they don't need the extra six classrooms. But, uh, yeah, we're just trying to throw everything where you're, have to take a roof off anyway, do everything you can fix all at once.
Member Lessons.
If I, thank you, that's, it's all helpful. I guess a couple of other comparisons that I noted is that it looks like the ROMIG project decreased in price a little bit. It was twenty-nine and now it's down to twenty-seven. I mean, have the the plans changed or a surrounding error?
No, the price actually went up and this one is made into a phase one. And in two years after that, we have a phase two.
Okay.
So it's decided we're in the middle of design. In fact, I will be bringing that to you for both the thirty-five percent designs as well as updated educational specifications to take a look at. And I want to get through this part and see how much we really need in that next phase, which could be a whole lot less than what I have scheduled in there, which is about nine million dollars. So between it all, I thought it was better to go ahead and phase part of it. Plus, we've got, as you've heard, we have a school that's pretty darn full. And we're gonna be looking at bringing in relocatable classrooms, more, could be six more, so that we can actually break off a part of the building from use because we can't do this in summers. We will have to do this over a school years. So we will have to close down parts of the school, finish it, reopen it, and take out another section.
If I may keep going, um, I feel like that's another conversation because I'm familiar with the ROMIG parking lot and the relos, and I cannot actually imagine where six more relos will go, but that's another conversation. I appreciate you spelling out that this is now a phase one plus a likely phase two project. I guess the only other question I had specific to this slide was that, um, I still see that the Lake Otis project from the most recent CIP is here. It's also a little bit more expensive. And but and the the CIP refers to project analysis report and this one refers to condition assessment report. Are those the same thing?
They're very similar. Uh, condition assessment actually tells us the actual conditions and also, uh, educational adequacies of which, again, they're getting into thirty-five percent and I will be bringing it to you also to approve. But as of this moment right now, it's still a school and it's still in in queue to be done.
Okay, and then the other thing is that it looks like Bear Valley is now not on that.
Bear Valley moved out because, uh, Mount Air Drive, the state slash Muni is extending it all the way down to meet up with some other roads and it goes right in front of the school. And part of that project will be putting in a new entrance to better do traffic. And it's felt that we would be better off waiting a couple of years until Mount Air Drive is completed, which they may also be bringing in utilities. And we'll see that and it, it's still in the six-year CIP, it's just out a couple more years.
To wait for the completion of road construction.
Yes.
That's really helpful. Um, again, in thinking about how to talk to community members about where did my place in line go?
We've talked to Nikki, she's well aware of it. She's a great communicator with the community. And she understands why it got pushed and what the new timeline is.
Member Holman.
When we're upgrading generators and doing significant electrical work, wondering if we're looking at the natural gas-fired generators that um, allegedly, I use the term allegedly whenever a vendor says something, allegedly could generate electricity on site more cheaply than we buy it with hot water as a as a byproduct.
So we have looked at the, uh, the natural gas generators, um, and we're gonna continue looking at them. I don't know if you're you're aware, but, um, last December, when it got below minus twenty because Alaska no longer produces enough, uh, natural gas, I I was actually in meetings with the state's EOC and the city's EOC about are we gonna have to do rolling power blackouts across the city? Um, they were not overly supportive of looking at us increasing the natural gas requirement at schools because we had those discussions about, um, you know, one, schools are are you know, they might very well be life support centers for a whole community. Um, do you really take the one commodity that is now scarce in Alaska or at least not available in the the quantities that they wanted and put it on high schools? So, you know, when we look at, um, future smaller buildings, we are gonna look at that. But I I think you're gonna see in Juneau this year, there's gonna be a lot of discussion about natural gas and how does the state, other than buying it from foreign countries, um, how do we solve our natural gas problem? Because it's it's statewide, so you know, it's really tough when you're going to meetings talking about rolling blackouts across Anchorage um, because of a shortfall, a known shortfall of natural gas and then putting a a building a hundred percent on natural gas. And it it just, we we are still looking at it, but I I think the state does need to fix the natural gas problem and I think we're gonna see in Juneau, um, there's gonna be a lot of push for that this year. I don't know how that'll impact other priorities. But it is true, we we have a natural gas problem and do we make it worse for the city?
And as a follow-up, and I have to admit, I never asked this question of the people that were pushing this, but I assume our natural gas increase would be some kind of a decrease for Chugac. Um, and we consume a bunch of natural gas anyway. I I I know net for the building, it would increase it. I don't know if it balances out on the other side. But the other thing that did occur to me, if they did do rolling blackouts, they won't do that with natural gas, which means we keep our buildings warm. I don't wanna sound too selfish that I'm gonna prioritize ASD buildings over other folks, but I would. So I I just don't know how that balances out overall.
I I'm honestly not, I'm not smart enough to know how. I can't answer that, but I can ask around.
Member Bellamy.
Thank you. Um, so if we, if the board decides to put the, um, Ursula Major demolition expense on the bond, it would add another five point four million to the seventy-three?
Or or less. We have two weeks to come up with possibly a different number.
So we just need to hang.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Couple of things on here, like to bring up, of course, the access control. And we'll have talked about that a little more. It's phase two. The last bond had the phase one, which got everything started, of which the board actually put a little bit of money towards some of the design work already prior to that. This is, we have fifteen schools that had SVUs done, but did not get access control. It was done before we had access control. Now, this is gonna pick those fifteen schools up and get
Point of, just a point of personal privilege. People listening probably don't know what an SVU is.
Oh, secure vestibule.
Yes.
And then, uh, the access control is the FOB systems. Swipe a FOB, card readers, some call. And we put those around from the the main entrance and around to up to four other entrances. This way, we don't have teachers that need to have exterior keys to the building because that becomes very expensive to replace, not just the keys, but to re- re- lock, rekey the whole building because they've lost their keys. So that, take care of that. ROMIG, uh, this is a big project, but then it's a big building. Uh, we have a very old roof, we have some structural, we have a lot of finishes and lot of electrical, some mechanical. So this is a big project and it's going to make that school better able to handle education. Some of the spaces are not laid out correctly for all of the education that we wish to do. So we're working on that. Already talked about CLAT and Tudor. The other couple of them on here is we got some planning and design, which will actually be looking at doing some upgrades for some generators, starting off with some of our high schools. Uh, getting some ideas how much they are. We've got generators, while they don't have a lot of hours on them, because we don't lose a lot of power, but not exercising them properly makes them go bad. You know, it's just like having your your car sitting out in your uh, garage, actually outside for years and never turning it on. So we have some that, besides upgrading, some very old with low hours, we will also set them up so that they exercise, self-exercise once a week to get the oils running and and get the engines going for thirty, uh, minutes a week. Next. And we talked about the access control and these are the fifteen schools. Uh, some of them were quite, quite a number of years ago that we did the SVUs and it's been a very good and a fairly successful, uh, design to secure the entrances to our schools. Now we're gonna be able to make them a little more secure by eliminating the need for actual brass keys by giving a lot of, uh, teachers and staff just FOBs to get in. And we can also control the times that they're available to be used and we record who's used them when they get in. Uh, we also have student nutrition and I wanted to touch on that. We have a a pretty good success story here. Uh, student nutrition, three years ago, changed over to traditional service. Think of the tray with the food, put it, that many of us went through school. Uh, well, at least I did, uh, that long ago, that you had a tray and they filled it with their food and you kept going. Well, they're back to that three years ago and if you look on this, on the lower corner, even though our ADM has dropped in the last three, because it was in the middle of that first year that they did it, we dropped almost fifteen hundred students. They've actually increased meal service by over a quarter million meals a year during that time.
So I think they're up to about twelve or thirteen elementary schools that are now traditional service and they're rolling out more. Every time they they roll it out, um, the number of kids who eat increases, the amount of trash decreases. Exactly what you would expect if you were going to microwave or put in an oven broccoli next to a chicken patty at the same temperature for the same time. The texture maybe isn't as appetizing as you would wa-wish. Um, so it's making a huge difference. The other thing they've done this year is they went up to forty-eight CEP schools, including Stream. Um, and and what's, what's fascinating is we lost a thousand kids, a little bit more um, over, year over year. But last week, they went over seventy-five thousand meals more served, um, year over year. So in the first month of school, already seventy-five thousand kids, more than last year, are getting food. And, um, they've really, they they're now having to produce more, even though we have less students, they're producing more and changing the menu and giving more options and traditional service. Um, and and really, that's, that is a big driver behind the facility upgrade. Uh, we had the water tank finally fixed up and running, um, behind student nutrition as a good backup for water supply if something goes wrong. Um, but that one directorate is is just knocking it out of the park um, over the last three years.
We go to the next page. They have set some pretty high goals. If you look on there, they're projected. I mean, they're looking at getting up to seven, over seven million meals served a year. Uh, you have a list here of schools yet to be done. They, right now, have three of our charter schools are on of which we have two of the CEPs, um, which I was here for a board meeting about a year ago, I think it was, when the board said that one of the things they wanted to do was to try and get our charter schools to, one was to be able to have school-provided meals available to them. And they are doing that. Uh, so what, and they're also, their participation rate, which is students that are available to partake that actually do, it's done as a percentage. They've actually been going up by an average of two percent a year. So they're doing very well. And so what they need now, and we have in here and we've started design, is to upgrade their facility to make it a lot more efficient, better able to handle traditional service. And they have been working with CPNC continuously to help upgrade more schools to get into traditional service. And you see a list of ones that are on here, including another charter school we would eventually like to get on, available. But, uh, and if you look at the schools on here that, especially elementaries and stuff, you'll find those schools are in our on our six-year CIP. So eventually, as we're renovating, we will start to make more of them available to traditional service.
And just a a interesting point or a factoid, they've already exceeded what they were going to use as a goal for this year's growth. And it's, it's just been a great year, a great start for them. And we're down to one school without a permanent cafeteria manager right now, which, um, is just remarkable. But barring any questions, that is the brief.
Other questions from the board regarding the presentation? Okay, hearing and seeing none, we can, uh, move to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contracts, negotiations and legal updates. Is there a motion?
Miss Chair, I moved to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contracts, negoti- um, and personnel.
Second. Seeing no objection, we're adjourned to executive session at five twenty-six PM. Thank you.